26th meeting, I'm glad that we're in air-conditioned quarters. That's all I can say right now. It just seems like it's very warm, not just here, but all over. So I want to call our Metropolitan Transit Commission meeting on Wednesday, July 26th, to order.
What?
To order. And good evening to everyone and those watching that are watching live via our streaming platforms. Thank you for joining us as well this evening. We have a full agenda, so let's go ahead and we will go ahead with our roll call vote. And let me see where my roll call is. I don't think I have a roll call. All right. We'll start. Is this it? Yeah, just the members. Here we are. Thank you very much. All right, so let's begin with Mecklenburg County, represented by...
Good evening. I'm Deanna DiOrio, Mecklenburg County manager, and I am here representing Commissioner Altman this evening, who is unable to be here due to illness.
All right. And then we have the Mayor Cornelius.
I'm present.
And the Mayor of Davidson.
Here.
And the Mayor of Huntersville.
Here.
The Mayor of Matthews.
Here.
The Min Hill Town Manager.
This is him.
All right. The Pineville Manager.
No, Mayor.
No, Mayor. So the Pineville Mayor.
Ten years if you're telling your dad.
I haven't known you ten years, Jack. Obviously, that's not going to be accurate, so, thank you. We will also, let's see, we need to recognize, it's Mr. Mayor Simmons here today. All right. I think that that covers all of the people that I have in the room. Oh, here, Mr. Lathrow is representing NC DOT. So we do have a quorum. We also have those that join us and our members that are not voting members, but we have regional representation across the county. So I'd like to recognize those on the, that are attending today, in addition to those that are town managers that are participating as well. So why don't we start with Mr. Mayor Reed? Can you, can we, can you hear us? I don't think that they can hear. Are we okay now? All right. We're going to recognize the members that are joining us that are our non-voting regional representatives. And with that, I want to...
We're still having a problem.
Okay, we're still having a problem with audio. Okay.
Try now.
Try now? All right. So what, we want to recognize the regional representatives that are online or watching us virtual, or participating virtually. So can we start with Mayor Reed?
No.
No, no. I don't think they can hear us. Manager Grant? Bill Thunberg? They can't hear us. Okay. I am going to assume that these folks are able now that...
Walker says.
I know.
Right, I understand.
Okay, well, we want to also welcome City Councilmember Ed Driggs, who chairs the transportation and does work in terms of the working group around CATS. All right, so did I miss anyone? All right, yes, please.
Good evening, Mayor Lyles. L. Joe W. Slasky, Transit Director for Rider Transit, representing Mayor Dush this evening.
All right, thank you.
Also, this is Mayor Walker Reed for Gastonia. I didn't have any audio earlier, so I couldn't hear anything.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Reed.
Okay.
Okay. And then I want to recognize Andrew Grant, Mr. Grant.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, and then I'm going to recognize Michael Peoples.
Thank you, Mayor.
And Randy Gates.
Good evening, Mayor.
Bill Thunberg.
Good evening.
All right, and Anthony, who's...
Robert.
Robert, Anthony Roberts. I'm like, you know, there are so many Anthony's in this room.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you very much. So, Paulus, do we have everyone acknowledged? Thank you very much. All right, let's go to our actual agenda. The minutes are found on pages five through 23 in the briefing book. Is there a motion to approve or make any, make any changes to the minutes as recorded?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mayor Knox, followed by Mayor Washam.
Um, Mayor Lyles, I did have an edit to them.
Yes, please.
Sorry, before it gets approved. It's on page 10 of the minutes, which is page 14 of the packet. My comments were mistakenly attributed to Edward Tillman. So it's the last paragraph on the page. It starts with...
I think, Ms. Satchel, if you could speak into the mic so that we can get this over to Paulus.
Yeah, it's, sorry, I'm just pulling it up. My, it's on, so it's page 10 of 19 of the minutes, which is page 14 of the packet for the evening. It's the bottom of the page, the comment that says it's from Edward Tillman. Will you be able to report back what the discipline, et cetera? That was my comment, not his.
All right. Got that. Thank you.
Thank you.
You captured it. Thank you for the comment and the correction. So any further comments on the minutes? Hearing none. All in favor of approval of the minutes, please raise your hand. And anyone opposed? Thank you. The minutes are approved. Do we have any public comments tonight?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. I'm looking for the cards. All right. Ms. Tate?
Yes.
And Mr. Wallace, right? Ms. Tate, please, you have three minutes to come, you can come to the podium, and Mr. Wallace will, after Ms. Tate, will have you next.
Sorry to stand and speak right here. Hello, everyone. My name is Jerika Tate. I am a resident of Mecklenburg County. I have been a resident for thousand times, since 2001. But I am here because I have recently been having to take public transportation. And I've come across some concerns. I have written my concerns, and now I'm here to kind of express it verbally. I am, one of the things I told Paulus I wanted to talk about today was the app, the CATS app. It doesn't seem to be, sorry, okay, sorry. Thank you. It doesn't seem to be matching at the times that the buses say that it's going to run and pick up. So I, I take Route 16, Bus 16, Route 16, and I've ran into some issues on numerous occasions. I have to actually walk two miles to get to catch the public transportation, which it, to me, I think that's a little excessive. And one of my concerns is that, you know, when, when it is time for me to be picked up, it doesn't match up, the app times does not match up with what is stated on the polls, the timing on the polls. Also, the bus doesn't come like it states that it's going to come. So I'm concerned about it because I take it to work, I take it for various appointments. And, you know, the fact that I have to walk two miles just to get, you know, access public transportation, that is, that is quite concerning. It's a little frustrating, no, not a little, it's a lot frustrating. And then, you know, I'm also putting my life at risk because there's no sidewalks where, where I have to access, you know, where I have to travel to catch the bus. So I've written this out. I am here to see where you guys are at in terms of, I live off of 160, Highway 160, the Steel Creek area. I'm, I'm just trying to see, you know, what your process is, how are we going about trying to at least get a Midway Point bus stop? And, and, you know, some of these stops that I am having to come across, it's, I don't even see it being ADA compliant. I, I, I'm so sorry, but there's a lot of issues in the Department of Transportation here in Charlotte, and I am just looking for some answers and hoping to resolve this issue, because I know I'm not the only one that's, that it's affected, affecting, so. But thank you so much for your time.
Ms. Tate, thank you first for, sorry, Ms. Tate, thank you first for helping us be more aware of what it means to be a person that relies on public transportation. I by no means have an answer for you today. It is definitely a work item and process for us, and we are trying to our very best to get through some of these issues. So I know that you had an opportunity to go to TSAC and have this same conversation. I'm sure we'll hear some ideas around that. But also, I hope that you'll know that the team of people, particularly Mr. Lawrence, will be able to work with you. Yes, two miles is too long to walk for transit.
Hey, Mayor.
I'm sorry.
Good, good. How you doing?
Mr. Walk, Mr. Mayor Reed, you need to go on mute, okay? So we're working on it, and I'm sorry that you're having to go through this experience now. We want you to hang in there with us.
Yes.
Please, all right?
Well, thank you. That's why I'm here. I'm just trying to work with everyone, you know? I want us all to be able to resolve this problem, not just for myself, but for the public.
We absolutely agree with you, concur completely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wallace?
Still Chris Wallace. Tonight, I'd like to talk about an overdue service that could establish a significant, sorry, expand a significant ridership base in North Meck, assist in traffic congestion relief, and provide fresh incentive for the taxpayers, continued patience and support on the Link's red line development. That service would be a rail replacement bus service, running on NC 115 with stops throughout Davidson, Cornelius, Huntersville, and Charlotte, before arriving at Huntersville Gateway. To provide context, I believe it was around five years ago, CATS utilized the I-77 Express lanes to implement an interim service for North Meck, the Metro Rapid BRT, Route 77X, 48X, and 63X. This alternative was selected for its low capital costs and efficient travel times, and the fact that it's easy to adjust a bus route. The downside of the low costs, unfortunately, was an inability to serve the downtowns because they're all located on the NC 115 O-line corridor. And for that reason, even if all-day and weekend service are implemented on these routes, crosstown connections would be impractical due to the locations of the parking rides. For the same reason, they're unable to leverage or amplify the higher-density rezoning work done by town leadership in anticipation of the Link's red line. Developments that are higher density, such as Brighton, lay unfinished and at risk of scaling back to say nothing of each town's main street and the business owners waiting on the connectivity they were promised. This trade-off was made carefully at the time and deemed agreeable for the sake of getting the ball rolling, but I believe that it's now clear the impact of the lack of integration was significantly underestimated, and it's time to, again, reassess the corridor. With service on 115 originally being dismissed over reliability concerns due to traffic, that's not unreasonable, but in the intervening years, significant work's been done to improve traffic flow and overall mobility. Travel time is a great goal, but integration is arguably a much more important goal for the towns themselves. To briefly describe my idea for the service, CATS should acquire around six 29-foot Gilig BRT-plus vehicles, wrap them red to showcase their purpose, and operate them on that route outside of the Metro Rapid hours, providing all-day service for customers from Davidson College to Uptown. By operating outside the hours, you avoid peak traffic times, and then by using specialized vehicles, you restore taxpayer faith in your ability to deliver quality returns while also advertising the service anytime anyone sees the bus. By operating both services in tandem, you maximize your ability to capture customers and meet their needs, but most importantly, by servicing that corridor with a bus, you obtain substantial high-quality data that will translate almost directly to the eventual Link's red line. And as always, I would love to discuss this further after tonight's meeting, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Wallace. We appreciate your participation and your recommendations for us to review, and appreciate this opportunity. So all of you guys on 115, you get ready to think this about this. Yes, of course. Mayor Edwards. There we go.
You know, for, for the past several years, we have been trying to get pads put in where it's sloping down onto the, onto 51, and between our planning director, myself, we've been asking and asking and asking, and it's always off in the distance someplace, like a cloud. These are dangerous. It's not only eight, not ADA compliant, people on a wet day can slide down the hill. You know, I've said before, you just can't stick a sign in the ground and expect it to be a perfect location for the bus to stop. And we have tried and tried, we're putting sidewalks in, we had requested, you take care of the pad and the shelter, and we'll take care of the sidewalks going up 51. Nothing. And this is more than once, more than twice, probably 10 times. So just, just as an input, so I understand Seal Creek and the issues they've got, so...
Thank you very much, Mayor. So those are the public comments that we have. I want to again thank the speakers for paying attention to what's going on and, and helping us hear what is important in these situations. So now we're going to move to an update from the Transit Work Group. We're going to have Mayor Bales, are you going to kick this off?
I am.
Okay, thank you.
So Mayor Higgins and I met with the Charlotte Working Group and, on July the 11th. And I will tell you, as you read through your material in your packet, several things, we walked through several issues or items. We got an update on the progress report that was provided. The FDA Financial Management Oversight Review kicked off this month, and Mr. Kegel will provide further details as part of his CEO report. We also had a presentation from Management Partners, and this is, they've changed, recently changed their name, and it's now Baker Tilly. But we had representatives from Management Partners, and they presented the CATS management roadmap and the priority areas of focus. We did receive this presentation back in, I believe it was December of 2022. But we had a little bit more opportunity to have the review at a higher level. And what I will tell each MTC member is that I would highly encourage that if you would like to have that opportunity to sit down to have a higher-level, in-depth discussion, please see Mr. Kegel, I'm sure we can set that up. I highly recommend it. I thought it was, it was valuable, and I think that you would appreciate some of the insight. But as a result of the review, the consultants recommended several next steps, some of which are already underway: leadership development and management team building, targeted plan to fill vacancies more quickly, an organization structure analysis, contract and performance management systems, et cetera. I would just say that at the end of the day, given Baker Tilly Management Partners' knowledge of CATS through the review, I think they will be able to assist us as we move, as we move things forward. Is there anything else that I have forgotten, Mr. Higgins, or Mayor Higgins?
I don't think so. You hit most of the items. Of course, some of the other recommendations were transit management services, RFP in accordance with best practices, clear communication protocols, and a reinvented governance structure that reflects community-wide services. And one of the things we also discussed was having key performance indicators brought back before this group so that we can judge how things are going. Mr. Kegel has committed to bring those forward to us. The only other thing I'll say is the folks that were present, I don't, don't have a list of all of them, but it was Mr. Kegel, Councilman Driggs, Councilman Bakari, Charlotte Manager Marcus Jones, again, Mayor Bales and myself, and several other CATS and Charlotte officials. So it was a really, really good meeting. I think it lasted two, over two hours.
Yes.
Great meeting.
It was a great meeting, and I think that as we continue to build the relationships between the MTC and the Charlotte Working Group, I think that the relationships that we have and the direction that CATS is going, we're really having that opportunity to level set and, and push things forward that really will matter to our residents at the end of the day, because at the end of the day, they are the ones who matter, and that's why we're here.
And one final thing, I will highly recommend, or second your recommendation, that everybody on the MTC take the time to sit down and, and hear this presentation, because it's difficult for us to explain everything that was discussed in a 45-second soundbite, so...
And I don't know if, if Councilmember Driggs would like to weigh in, too?
Thank you, Mayor Bales. I want to emphasize, it is the Charlotte/MTC Working Group, and you guys are members of it, so we all are in the same standing and working together on this. I will just comment, the report was very detailed and unsparing, I think it's fair to say, about the situation that existed at CATS. I was personally encouraged by the fact that when I asked them, is the work that we are doing, does it address what's in here? Is there an overlap between the issues you saw and the work they were doing? And they said yes. And I also asked them, would you say it's fair that the situation now is very different from then? And they said yes. And I think Mr. Kegel will talk about some continuing work we may do with them. So I, too, felt that it was a very constructive meeting. We spent about two hours. I think it's possible to do it in less time, but if you really want to know a lot of the nitty-gritty about what was going on and what we're dealing with, it's in the slides that are available. And also, again, you can have a private show there.
Thank you. I really have heard such positive comments, not necessarily on what the discussions are, but the discussions are taking place, and I want to thank all of you for the participation that you're taking and the serious efforts that are being made. I, I think this is going to be very beneficial and perhaps something that would be a standing idea for us, so, thank you very much. So now we're going to move to the interim CEO report, and Mr. Kegel still has a lot of things going on.
We do, Mayor. So thank you, MTC and Mayor, for, for allowing me to make these comments. First of all, I'll start where the last conversation left off. We will reach out, Paulus will reach out to members of the MTC to, to ask if you would, if you would like to have, participate in a, in a separate meeting with Management Partners, now Baker Tilly, to present, to go through their presentation. The presentation itself is in the packet. It was distributed in December, but it's in your packet tonight. But I, I will say, it is very beneficial, I would agree, that it is beneficial to hear from Baker Tilly Management Partners, their observations on, on their findings in the study. With that, I will go through some of the items in my report, try to keep it brief. First item is related to the May 2022 incident on the Blue Line. As, as you all are aware, I sent out a letter last week informing MTC that we have reached an agreement with Siemens related to the truck overhaul, scope of work, and an additional work required as we continue to conduct the ongoing truck maintenance or vehicle maintenance. We are very close to finishing the contract on the technology system that will be installed on all of the vehicles. That should be completed within the next two weeks. The terms and conditions, we're just ironing it out. The lawyers are making sure all the Ts are crossed and the Is are dotted. I will say there is one update to that part of the report. The memo that I sent stated that we would install the technology monitoring system on all of the S-70 vehicles. S-70 vehicles currently serve our light rail Blue Line. However, as we were looking at it and talking to Siemens, we will actually install all of them on the S-70, and we will include the S-700 vehicles, which are the Gold Line vehicles. Those vehicles are relatively new, but while we're making this change and given the value that we see in the technology contract, there's no reason not to include those vehicles as well. So that would be the only change from the letter. We had, the second item, we had a derailment on May 10th, 2023. It was a light rail derailment. It occurred in our service yard. We sent out communications to the MTC on the day that that occurred. We have completed the investigation in conjunction with NC DOT, and what we have determined is a couple of things. One, the derailment that occurred in the yard was not a bearing-related issue. The investigation determined that this was not a bearing issue. The second thing is, so what, what were the factors that led to the derailment? And so this one is a little bit harder to describe in that, as they went through the investigation, they identified some small contributing factors that all came together at once that led to it. So some of those contributing factors, the wheels on the vehicle had recently been ground. Grinding the wheels is a normal maintenance procedure, and they had been recently or freshly ground. And that creates very small striations in the face of the wheel, because they put it on a lathe, then they grind it. Those striations are normal, they are not outside of normal spec, but that was one contributing factor. In association with that, they determined that the track where this occurred had some minor wear on the crown of the track. Again, it was not outside of normal specifications, but there was some wear there. They also determined that along the track, there are devices called track greasers, and they do exactly what the name implies, they grease the track, especially in corners, and so they're intended to reduce friction along the track. Track greasers have two heads, one head, they believe, was clogged or inoperable at the time, and then the train was moving at a very slow speed. So what they surmise is, it was in a corner, the wheel was freshly ground with striations, there was slight wear on the track, and as the operator was resuming, you know, they had stopped to come through the corner, as they took off to move forward at that slow speed, the wheel literally just caught and rode up over the track. It was one of those things that there was not a single item that could be identified as the cause, it was just many small causes that all came together, right time, right place, circumstances. Again, this derailment occurred in the yard, no passengers onboard, no injuries, the operator was fine, and, and we conducted the full investigation with NC DOT, so we have closed that. Correct. So it was the trailing wheel assembly, it was the trailing truck vehicles, there are two vehicles per train and three trucks per vehicle. So this was the trailing vehicle, trailing truck, in effect, the, the rear wheel set of the train rode up over the track for, for several contributing, we surmise, due to several contributing factors. An update on our bridge inspection, so last time I said that our parking decks are inspected, they are. All are completed. North Davidson has known issues, and we continue to work on that with our engineers. The bridges, we continue to have six bridges that remain to be inspected. Where, the reason those bridges are lagging for the inspection is, all of them are in various railroad right-of-ways, either NCRR, Norfolk Southern, or CSX, or multiples of those. So the first thing we have to do is get right of... multiples of those. So the first thing we have to do is get right-of-entry from the railroads involved. The second thing we have to do is schedule those inspections around their operations. And then the third thing we have to do is, we bring in a specialty crew to conduct these inspections, because they literally require rappelling from above the bridges and those kinds of things. So we continue to work on right-of-entry and scheduling. As soon as we can get all of this come together with scheduling, we will let the MTC know and make you aware of the status. But we remain, we remain working through it on these six remaining bridges. Related to NC DOT, we've had no critical correspondence this month or since the last meeting. There was one inspection, an unannounced inspection that NC DOT conducted. This was an inspection of some of our at-grade crossings along the Blue Line. They found some minor items for maintenance, but no safety-critical items. These were items such as the blinking lights along an at-grade crossing. Some of those lights were dirty. They had dust on them. We needed to clean lenses. They also identified some of the junction boxes. They would normally have locks on them. A couple of those did not. We've replaced those locks. So again, they were certainly issues that we were happy to address and happy that they brought to our attention, but they weren't, they were minor maintenance-type of issues, not safety-critical items. We have recently closed out our financial year, our fiscal year. Mr. Howell and our finance department are working through the results, and we will have more results as the closeout completes. But I do feel comfortable letting you know that we feel confident that we will end this fiscal year with a surplus or net revenues remaining, i.e. our revenues exceeded our expenditures. We will have a final number as we go through financial closeout, and we'll provide more information to the MTC as we have that. Recruitment. On recruitment, we have made some pretty aggressive changes in our pay structure for our field units. So you'll recall, the collective bargaining agreement went into place for the bus operators, who are not City of Charlotte employees, but who do have a collective bargaining agreement and work for the contractor. That provided them with some pretty aggressive pay increases as well. We have followed suit for our employees, especially in field units. What that means is our rail operators, targeting our rail operators, our rail operations control center staffing, and our STS, or Special Transit Services, operators. Those pay increases are on the order of anywhere between 5% to 15% increases ongoing to their base rates of pay. So that is showing signs of improvement in our recruitment and retention efforts. It's been about a month now, so a month doesn't create a trend. So as we have more trend information, we'll certainly provide that and share the trends with you. But we are seeing some positive signs there, both anecdotally from employees feeling that, you know, we are doing the right thing to pay them appropriately, and also in new hires and our recruitment classes. From the FTA standpoint, we talked several, over several meetings, that the FTA is conducting a special review. That special review has two areas of emphasis. One is finance, and the second is operations. On July 19, the FTA and CATS had an opening meeting for the beginning of the Financial Management Oversight, or FMO, portion of the review. Since July 19, we have been providing them documents that they have requested. The FTA will move through this process basically in three phases. The first phase is gathering data, so assessment. The second phase is testing, including interviews with staff. And then the third phase is reporting. So the timelines that they provided us are that the first and second phases should take between four and six weeks for those two phases. And the third phase, which is reporting, really results in their findings. And their draft findings will be issued within 30 days of completion of the testing phase. So that gives us a roughly two and a half to three and a half-month horizon, we believe, based on their initial, our initial conversation or opening meeting with them. And that's on the FMO. The operations review, FTA is in final process through their procurement to select an operations review consultant. So they have not done that. We expect that to be any time now. And when that occurs, the operations review consultant will then contact us and establish the same process with an opening meeting. As soon as we have dates on that, we will, and know more on that, we will provide updates to the MTC. The bus management RFP, we, so everyone's aware, our current bus management contract is held by a company called RATP Dev. That company, their contract expires in February of 2024. Earlier this year, we issued the RFP for the service. We received two proposals. RATP Dev was not one of the proposers. So we are in process of evaluating the two proposals and going through the process of having conversations and interviewing those proposers. And we will be moving forward, or providing the MTC with additional information, as well as the city council, as we go through the deliberations and make a final recommendation on one of the two proposers. However, we know, because they did not propose, our next bus operations contract will not be held by the current contractor, RATP Dev. With that, I have one more item, but I'd like to ask Catherine Comer to approach the podium to provide the final item in the CEO's report.
Hello, everyone. Good evening. As Brent mentioned, I'm Catherine Comer. I'm your Sustainability and Resiliency Officer. Honored to serve in that position, and also honored to be sharing some really good and exciting news for the Charlotte area transit system. We were notified last month that after a competitive application process, we were awarded $30 million by the Federal Transit Administration, by the FTA. This was through their Low or No Emissions Grant and Bus and Bus Facilities Grant program that we have applied for historically. However, this is by far the largest amount in which we've been granted. And with CATS competitive match to this, competitive participation contribution, we're looking at a total of roughly $57 million of investment back into our transit system. So take a minute to acknowledge that, but also acknowledge the teams that came together at CATS, many of the leaders sitting to my right, ranging from finance, grants, to planning, to development, to sustainability, I'm partial, but also to our marketing, our comms team. It was a real team effort, our bus operations division, our IT division, our HR division. Honestly, we all came together to pull off this grant, submit it, and we're really happy that it'll be replacing 31 of our oldest diesel buses, installing new electric vehicle charging infrastructure, and then helping us advance our workforce development program, which was developed by Dr. Tina Hall and her team here, that are responsible for training at CATS, the E-Serve Academy. So we will be having an event next week. You all are invited. We hope you will join us in that celebration. We'll also have some special announcements around our workforce development program. So if you have not received your invitation, let us know. We'll make sure you get that as quickly as we can. Thank you. Happy to take any questions before I depart.
No, this is great news. This is great news, and we're very much appreciative. And when we get a competitive grant and get this kind of award, it makes a huge difference. And so we're looking forward to the celebration of the event and hearing more about the impact as well. So, thank you.
And Mayor Lyles, I do want to give a special thanks to Catherine and all of the CATS team. We have received one low-no grant in the past for $3 million. So this is a tenfold increase. This was a great win, and I really appreciate all of the hard work that they put into it.
More is better.
More is better.
That's right. That's right. So, thank you. We are actively working with all of our sustainability opportunities in Washington, as the administration is putting out this money and trying to make sure, the small things really will make a difference. But when you do the transit system, aside from the heat pumps and the, you know, the things that they're doing with consumers, I think that seeing this effort is huge for us in a community like ours. So, and to think that we get rid of diesel buses, really, any part of that is really good. So, any other comments or questions on the interim director's report or any of the items that were mentioned? Any comments or questions? Okay. Well, thank you very much, Brent. I continue to say that the organization is moving quickly and more responsibly, and I know that that means, everyone that's joining us in this room with CATS, I want you to know how much we appreciate the efforts that you're making. We know that change is hard, and we, but we see it happening, and the results are clearly there. So, thank you very much. Okay, so we have an update on a number of items, and so we're going to get Jason Lawrence up to provide us an update regarding service planning. Jason?
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the MTC. And Paulus told me this would work, so I'm going to give it a try. So, thank you, Paulus. So, tonight, I want to give you an update on overall about some of our service planning initiatives. And there were some questions from the last MTC meeting in May regarding missed trips and service performance. And so we folded that all into one presentation tonight. Paulus, next slide, please. So, I want to talk a little bit about the August 22 service reductions. That was a point of conversation at the last meeting. We've been talking about that at TSAC. We've brought that up at this board a couple of times, the performance ridership update. I want to close out with some good news on the Route 74 Union County Express Service. Next slide. Just to recap, roughly about this time last year, we were in front of you to talk about really a lot of missed trips that we were seeing on our bus side, upwards of 10% each day on average throughout our system. And so we went through a concentrated, focused approach to determine how could we scale back service to improve reliability by looking at ridership level by every single trip throughout our system. We conducted that analysis and came to a conclusion that if we could reduce service on a handful of our routes to improve service to our system overall, roughly 20% of our network. Next slide. We communicated that throughout the public, through a series of public outreach directly to the northern towns at Park and Rides and at the Charlotte Transportation Center. Next slide. And those reductions, as you see on the screen there, was really focusing on our routes that were 20 minutes or 15-minute frequency and scaled those back, but also took a surgical approach, looking at frequencies where we needed to include additional service and looking at ridership, say, trips in the afternoon on the Route Number 9. And we've continued to, with that approach throughout the past year. Next slide. We did make some adjustments to the Northern Town Express routes, namely the 77X, the 48X, and the 63X, by reducing some of the trips in the morning and the afternoon, but still maintaining 20-minute frequency, but reducing the span of service throughout that time. Next slide. So how has service performed since then? We have been focused on reliability, but we are seeing an uptick in some of the missed trips. We think that's largely due to seasonal and day-of-week variances. Our workforce since February has moved towards stabilization. I think you heard of Mr. Kegel, some good news around the recruitment. We're starting to see some good news on the bus side, not enough to bring frequency back, but at least to stabilize us through this time period. And we're looking at missed trips daily, not only just as an average, but looking at it each day to see where some of our pain points are. Next slide. As you can see on the slide there, around July of last year, we reached a peak of nearly 10% of missed trips throughout our system, but steadily declined right after the August change, and really dipped below, you know, around the 2% range throughout January. But we're starting to see some increases in that now. We do believe that's largely due to some of the seasonal variances with time off and vacation for our operators. But we're looking at this very closely. We're hovering right around 3% average throughout each day through a calendar month. But if you go to the next slide, that varies greatly throughout the week. Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, we're looking pretty good, but in some days, we miss no trips. But we have a greater missed trips on Saturdays and Sundays. So we're looking at this, at a very kind of focused effort to see where we can package the work to make the work more appealing to our operators to mitigate some of these missed trips that we're seeing throughout the week. But we're looking at this very closely. We're not at a point where we want to cut back service further, but we are looking at where, if we need to, where that may occur. But we're also looking on the other side of that. When operator gets, situation gets better, where can we surgically increase service where we need it the most? Next slide. So at this point, we are continuing to retain those August 22 service adjustments from last year, because we think it's important to maintain that reliability. But we're going to continue to evaluate ridership and operator levels to ensure that we continue with that reliability focus and look at options to improve those services strategically. On Monday, we issued an express route survey to really understand how are the changing dynamics of the work as people do hybrid work throughout the week? How is that changing how people come into downtown Charlotte? So we have a survey that's online right now. We're starting to get a really good, healthy response rate from that. And of course, our Title VI evaluation to close out, the recommendation to retain those 22 service adjustments will come to you in the coming months. Next slide. So, want to talk a little bit about, you know, we talked about the missed trips, but despite some of the reductions that we had to make last year, we are seeing some improvements to ridership. When you compare it to, say, January of last year, just before, if we go back in time, I think where we were, you know, a year ago, you know, a year and a half ago, when Omicron variant was starting to wane, hybrid work had not happened yet. People were still doing a lot of remote work. So around February, March, we were coming out of the pandemic in a positive manner. People were coming back to work, and we've really seen the ridership react to that. So if we look at that moment in time from a comparison standpoint, you see there, we're close to 9% increase in our bus automatic passenger counting data. That's the utility that captures people going off each and every bus. And then we see some high points on individual routes, like Route 9 increasing 6.5, and our express ridership overall, not individual routes, but overall increasing just right at 20%. At the links Blue Line, we're seeing some great improvements along there. You know, last year, from June of last year, we're up 19%, but when we looked just before people started coming back to work, we're, have improved just right at 90%. So we were at roughly 9,000 people a day on a weekday on the Blue Line. Today, we're 16,000, 17,000 averaging throughout the week. So we're seeing some marked improvements there. But we're also seeing some other emerging patterns, of course, the hybrid work schedule, but special events are really strong for us, like a Saturday. In your report, you'll see, we had 17,000 average on a Saturday, and that's largely driven by Charlotte FC or events in Uptown. Now, when the Panthers come or a Hornets. So, there's not a weekend where there's not some event that's driving ridership. Next slide. So, to show an example of that, it's a sample month, a weekend in May where we did not have a special event. You see maximum load per rail car. So, and we have, in a train set, there's two rail cars. So imagine just, each car has 40 loads at a maximum time. We got that maximum load by the Seventh Street Station. And so we go, you know, what happened the weekend when we had, go to the next slide, Paulus. We had, in one weekend, we had Taste of Charlotte, and we had Charlotte FC against Seattle. So only imagine when Messi comes here later in the year, what that's going to look like for us. And if you go to the next slide, Paulus, you can see just a huge difference in just where a special event occurs, where we have, and this is at 20-minute frequency on the weekends, where we have multiple times where we have cars having over 150 passengers per load, and then seeing like the, by station, how that changes. So we're watching this dynamic. And I think the point of this is, as we come out of the pandemic, looking at where markets that we can capture more effectively, and how do we allocate services to that market. If you go to the next slide, Paulus, you can see some of that show up in the hybrid work pattern when we look at ridership patterns. What you see here are each day of the week for a sample week in June. I think the point here to make is that on Monday through Thursday, we have higher ridership. Then on a Friday, where the loads really drop down to almost like half. Then on a Friday, where the loads really drop down to almost like half. And then on the weekday percent of express bus riderships, so what this is showing us, how much of the express bus ridership can be counted per day? And so, you see that drop on the Fridays where that really drops. So, we're seeing some patterns from the hybrid schedule that we think will continue, but we're monitoring that very closely and look at the Uptown employers. And this is mainly what we are asking our express customers to help us understand. Would a 3:00 trip help them more than, say, a 4:00 trip or a 6:00 trip? Has the peak changed at different times? That's the detail we're trying to gather from our express customers to better understand that, but also looking how special events and other opportunities to chase other markets for ridership will occur to us. Next slide. Yes, sir.
Do you have the same metrics to look at for College Game Day, Blue Line, UNCC for football, Gold Line, and Blue Line both to look at Johnson C. Smith as well?
Absolutely. We don't have it in this, but certainly that is something that we can look at. And the Gold Line is a good example. We're seeing spikes on that as well to see how that is reacting. But a good point to that, we'll look at that, the UNC College Games and see how that impacts ridership. Absolutely. So, as we ran out, you know, looking at missed trips, looking at ridership, you know, we're moving forward, as discussed in front of this body, moving forward with our microtransit procurement for early 2024 rollout. We did receive a grant last year through FTA to continue looking at opportunities to improve services that will begin fall of this year. It's going to build upon the adopted envision, my ride plan, to really, really re-envision our services. That effort will be focused more on customer experience, how to make our system more approachable, easier to understand. So, when somebody's standing at a route that says Route 17 Commonwealth Avenue, does that mean anything if you're in Matthews when Commonwealth Avenue is in Plaza Midwood? That's just a route that was extended many, many times throughout the years. So, really rethinking our route numbers, our colors, how we show up at the bus stop would be really important. And then how to find strategies to close that digital divide? If we're going to rely increasingly on the mobile app for people to buy tickets, to plan their trip, to look at when the next bus is coming, how do we close that divide so that not, nobody's left behind in that space? And of course, it'll help support our microtransit implementation for the more system-level work, you know, outside of the northern towns, which is, of course, is part of our upcoming procurement. Next slide. So, I'll close with the Route 74X Union County Express. Good news, I believe at our last meetings, we talked about that there's, there was, could have been an opportunity for this, for the route to be discontinued. Of course, the regional express services outside of the county, per MTC policy, is jointly funded by CATS and a regional partner. In this case, our regional partner was Union County. Union County had expressed a desire locally to have more jurisdictional support from jurisdictions up and down the 74 corridor. It has two park and rides, one in Monroe and one in Indian Trail, the Union Town Center Park and Ride. Next slide. And so, a series of events have occurred that brought us to this point. On April 17th, the Union County Board of Commissioners voted to no longer fund their portion of the 74X bus service, and then they requested us to begin that process to discontinue the route. On June 13th, Indian Trail Town Council voted to contribute funding towards the service. And so, on Monday, June 19th, the Union County Board of Commissioners voted to continue funding the 74X service to the town of Indian Trail. At this point, the town, the city of Monroe has not contributed funding towards this, so we will, the last day of service to the city of Monroe will be September 29th to coincide with our October 2nd service change. Next slide. So, the route will look like this. At this point, it'll have one main park and ride in the town of Indian Trail at the Union Town Center there, just off of 74 in Indian Trail. So, as we go forward at the current partner funding levels, the last day of service will be September 29th in the city of Monroe. We're going to continue customer engagement. We are doing express service surveys, and we'll get more information from riders up and down the line. And we're looking closely with Indian Trail, Union County to develop an outreach and marketing plan. We think we can do a better job of letting people know about the service, know about the opportunities that can exist with that service, and look at ways to improve their travel time and commute. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Are there any, Mayor Higman?
Yeah, thank you, Jason. Very good report. Obviously, your goal for missed route is probably zero, but is there a best-in-class, realistic goal of X percent or historical level that CATS has hit that you think is good?
I think, let us look back at some of the historical data. We've been watching this more closely, of course, during the pandemic with the operator shortages. I would like to confirm where we were historically to come back to, but I do think it'd be hard to have 0% like every day, obviously. But I think what's changed and what's challenging, you know, before the pandemic, we had a fairly large, what we call an extra board. So, we had a lot of extra operators that we could assign to services throughout the day, and we just don't have that flexibility now. Every day, we're expending our extra board. And then the before times, before pandemic, we often did not do that. And so, I think that the point of this conversation, we come out of this, is coming up with metrics that we can effectively meet. But I do think we want to get as close to zero as possible. Absolutely right.
Okay. Thank you.
And Mayor Higman, members of the MTC, I will also say, you know, we've talked a lot about unscheduled absences. Clearly, unscheduled absences contribute to missed trips, right? There's a direct correlation there. And so, we are working through that with our own staff. The contractor is working through that as well. They're making changes. The other thing I will say, when you see January, we were down at about 1%. July, we're at about 4. We would like the 4% to be lower. But I will say, and Jason alluded to this, there is a high amount of seasonality in missed trips, because what happens is, right now, the unscheduled absences across the year, across all 12 months, are about the same, right? There's not a whole lot of variation in unscheduled absences across the year. There is a huge amount of variation in scheduled absences or vacation time, and a spike where we would expect them to, July and August and December. And so, I do think we have some opportunities to better manage scheduled absences. Our operators, clearly, that's, that's an impact on them, right? Because summers are when, we all take vacations primarily because kids are out of school and all those things, and around Christmas time and those things. So, we are looking at that, but right now, at 4%, as Jason said, given that this is, this is sort of the season where we do have, the shortages are really exacerbated because of scheduled absences, we don't feel like, we feel like we're moving in the right direction on our staffing and position to make trips.
Mayor Bales?
Thank you. Mr. Lawrence, I just want to say thank you to yourself, to all of CATS staff, to Mr. Kegel, for revisiting and relooking at how we can improve customer service and how we can market and promote our service to the community at large. So many times, I have conversations with folks, and they don't know that the service may or may not exist. And so, I think the initiatives that we have here, especially for a community like mine, just north of the town or from the, of the city, where microtransit will be implemented, I think that as we continue to move and you continue to push for a better experience to make sure that it's approachable, it's accessible, it's easy to use, I think what we will find is more and more of our residents will utilize the service. So, thank you for taking that initiative and putting that out for, out there for us this evening.
Any other questions or comments, Ms. Excellent?
Thank you, Mayor Lyles. Since TSAC advocates for riders, I'd be remiss if I didn't bring this up at every meeting. There's been a lot of good news with, you know, the funding for more buses, improved maintenance and safety on the Blue Line, raising salaries for operators, the bus stop amenities that are, will be talked about later. But the most important thing is frequency, and frequency was cut severely last August. And so, that's, with more missed trips, that's on top of less frequent service. I mean, like Ms. Tate that spoke before, like the 16 used to run every 15 minutes. It runs every 30 now. So, a missed trip is an hour wait, whereas it used to be 30 minutes. So, I just want to, like, keep our eyes on the prize here that restoring the labor force is like the most important thing that CATS can be doing. So, I would just really be interested to hear updates every month about, like, you know, is raising salary, is changing the way that scheduling is done, is that going to get more operators available so that we can increase service? Because that's just really, all of these other things are good, but the most important thing for riders is frequency, and we're lacking in that.
Agreed. Okay. Other comments? Okay. Well, let's see. We'll move on. Are you going to also provide some information for us? Additional information, Jason? On the overview of changes?
Yeah. So, last, our last meeting, we shared with you some policy changes to the travel markets policy and the service guidelines. We had that in a presentation. That was the information item. We sent the Red Line document out to you all after that meeting, and in the packet today, the Red Line document is included as well. And in front of you tonight is an action to adopt the changes to MTC 05 travel market guidelines, travel market policy and MTC 06 service guidelines.
So, in, in the materials that were sent out, there are, there's a group of these action items for the, what do you call them? Policy decisions?
So, this is a policy change?
A policy change. And the first one is proposed changes for travel market and transit service guideline policies. We're required to vote on these, and so, I've had a conversation with Brent about this. It's really almost an operational policy, but under the existing agreement that we have, we are accountable for taking this vote. I think it's probably more of an operational issue that we should be aware of, but not necessarily have the ability to say, this is something that we all understand and have read and are voting on. So, let's see, do we have the first one? Are there, there's basically the ones that we have is proposed changes to CATS travel market and transit service guideline policies. We presented them last week, if there's, I mean, last, at our last meeting. If there are any questions, Jason's here. Otherwise, we need a motion to adopt the proposed changes.
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the proposed service and travel market policies as presented.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Now, this is for our voting members. If you would please raise your hand for approval. Okay. And anyone opposed? Okay, we're good. All right?
The second, the second item, and we apologize for this, the second item is, we have a presentation this evening, and we would ask that the MTC consider voting this evening as well because of some time constraints around this item. In a nutshell, this is an item related to the Independence Busway, and Kelly Goforth is here to give you a brief presentation on this item.
Good evening. I'm Kelly Goforth, Director of Development, and I'd like to give you a brief summary update on the Independence Boulevard Busway Restoration Project. Talk about the current status, the benefits of the project, and the schedule for it. So, the Independence Boulevard Busway, which originally opened in the late 1990s, was closed in 2017 during construction of the Gold Line Streetcar Project related to the Hawthorne Lane Bridge. It was anticipated that it would remain closed while NCDOT converted the busway into express lanes as part of their Independence Boulevard widening project. But that project faced funding shortfalls which delayed the conversion to the toll facility. And then last year, we requested funding to restore the busway operation in the interim period. So, this project will modify the entrance and exit of the busway at the Hawthorne Lane Bridge. NCDOT agreed to manage and execute this work for us through a municipal agreement that was approved in 2022, and the original estimated cost of that project was $750,000. Last month, NCDOT completed their design for the project and provided an updated cost estimate, and that estimate is now $1.3 million. The cost increase is related to higher unit prices as they face bid price increases in their projects and contractor shortages, which is pushing up pricing. The NCDOT Expressway project is currently scheduled to begin in 2028, so that would give us about four years of use of the busway if we move forward with this project. We believe there's significant benefits to implementing this project. It would be used by five CATS bus routes, the express routes listed here. And as Jason mentioned in his report, we've seen some significant return increases on the ridership on those routes, and we're at about 260 daily riders on those five routes. And this project really means faster travel times, improved travel times for those riders, up to 15 minutes for each trip. So, that's significant value for those riders. It also means more consistent travel time and improved reliability for those routes, which will incentivize, we believe, increased transit ridership. It also has this intangible benefit of being highly visible. It's in the median of Independence Boulevard, so it really highlights the benefits of our transit investment. It also will result in operational efficiency for those buses and reduce our operating costs, and we've estimated that at about $100,000 a year. The proposed schedule for the project, NCDOT has issued the invitation to bid July 19th. Tonight, we're scheduled to consider MTC approval of this increased budget. The bid opening is scheduled for August 16th, and following that, we would go to City Council for approval of an amendment to the municipal agreement for the increased costs. Then, NCDOT would award the contract and issue a notice to proceed for construction in September with anticipated completion by the end of the year and opening in early 2024. So, tonight, we're recommending MTC approval of a budget amendment to add $550,000 to the project budget. That's based on this current cost estimate, which would increase, increase the total budget to $1.3 million.
All right. The staff is recommending that we adopt this tonight. I think it's on page 143 in the materials that were sent out. And I think if we're looking at this, it is around actually opening up that dedicated bus lane, and you saw the sights and talk about frequency and more efficiency for the riders. So, do we have a motion to adopt the, I'm sorry. Yes, please.
Is the $106,000 a year, or is it a one-time for the four years?
It's, that'd be the annual, estimated annual savings for four years.
So, we're going to spend $1.3 million to save $106,000?
Times four.
I'm just curious.
So, about, so about $400,000 in operating savings. And then I think the other thing to consider is the value of that travel time savings for our riders, which we're estimating, you know, based on the value of people's time at anywhere between $75,000 to $200,000 a year for those riders. So, so when you add up that, I think the, the value is worth the cost. That's, that's our recommendation.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Mayor Higman?
I just wanted to remind everyone that it's my recollection, we've had several public comments regarding this bridge over the years, and people asking why it wasn't open, and I think they finally gave up because it was just delayed forever. I think we should do this before the price goes up again. So, I'd like to make a motion that we...
Madam Chair, this is, this is Mr. Thunberg. Hate to be that guy, but I think you have to vote to suspend the rule first.
Brent, do we have to suspend the rule for an item on the agenda?
Yeah, this was on the agenda before. It's if you place a new item on the agenda, but this was, this was on the agenda.
So, Mr. Thunberg, this was on the agenda, and so, I don't think that we have to have a suspension of the rules, but I want to make sure that that was the right, the question that you were asking or the question that you were saying.
Yes, ma'am. That's what I was asking. Thank you.
So, thank you. All right. So, Mayor Higman?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we authorize the construction of the Independence Busway at the Hawthorne Bridge reconstruction or something to that effect.
Okay. That we accept the recommendation for the Independence Busway construction to approve the budget increase for the restoration of it. the budget increase for the restoration of it.
Yes.
All right. Do we have a second? Second. Thank you, Mayor Bales. I, I really think, I, sometimes I drive through there and I think it's really bad publicity that we're not doing something about it. And this will actually be a change in that sometimes I think we could probably save as much money because of the way that we have to clean up that lane almost on a regular frequency basis because there's so much trash in it. And so there, there's some reasons to do this in four years, $400,000. It's not a perfect offset, but it's a very close one when you put everything in it that we spend on this, on that busway lane. So we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion of it? Without, well, let's go ahead and vote on the recommendation for approval of the budget increase for the Independence Boulevard Busway. Raise your hands if you're in favor. Okay. Thank you, everyone. Anyone opposed? No opposition, so that is adopted. Thank you very much. I'm really hopeful that this is, maybe we need a mural or something. There needs to be some art, public art out there or something. The bus is actually coming, so, okay. So the next item that we have on our agenda is beyond our policies is to hear from our co-chair of the Transit Services Advisory Committee, Ms. Exlin.
Thank you, Mayor Lyles and members of the MTC. We've had two TSAC meetings since the last MTC meeting. So for our June meeting, we, we had also approved the Transit Markets and Services Guideline Policy Changes that you all just approved earlier. We heard about the CTC redevelopment, environmental assessment, and there was some discussion of how bus routes may change in response to both the new CTC as well as like the interim while it's being constructed. Some of those ideas include interlining different bus routes, connecting to more hubs outside of Uptown and consolidating routes where necessary. Those ideas have the potential to make transit more efficient for riders, but we would be, take a critical eye to any plans that might reduce service. So we look forward to hearing more as plans progress. We also heard about the Transit Ambassador Program. That was something we weren't aware of before. I believe it started late last year where there's sort of a supplemental, I don't want to say security, but ambassadors who, who ride on some of the bus routes to help answer questions, help with fare collection. I think it's in response to some of operators' concerns about safety, which we were really excited to hear about that and hope that that continues to go well. At our July meeting, we had an extensive discussion about the bus stop improvement plan. As you can guess, TSAC members have been advocating for more bus stop amenities basically since we've existed. We were really glad to see a line item in the budget for this year so that we can actually see like what was spent, what got built. And there's now a list of actual stops as well as a methodology for choosing what gets built at different stops. There's a pilot for solar lighting at stops. So these are all great things. As I mentioned before, there's always, there's good stuff happening. Of course, we still want more frequency. We also had numerous people support the Independence Busway, so I'm, I'm pleased everybody approved it tonight. I can tell you my coworker, he commutes on the express bus from Matthews. He's been asking about, about it for a year and now I have good news for him.
Tell him that Mayor Higdon made the motion.
I will.
I'm running for reelection, so.
Well, campaigning. And we are also glad to hear that the 74X isn't going to be completely discontinued. Of course, we'd love to see the town of Monroe provide partner funding to keep the route its full length as it currently is, but if it has to stop in Indian Trail, at least it'll go that far. That concludes my remarks. Thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you very much for the work that you continue to do. I'm sorry. Thank you very much for the work that the group continues to do. Any questions for the group? All right, hearing none. My understanding is that the Citizens Transit Advisory Group has, did not have a meeting since our last MTC meeting, so we will not have a report from that group. And so with that, we have completed our agenda for this evening. Is there any discussion that any member of the MTC would like to see or, or any announcements from the membership? Okay. Well, with that, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Let me.
Second. All in favor, I say aye, yes. Thank you, everyone. Our next meeting is August the 23rd. That was good. Preparation makes it work. It really does. Second. All in favor, I say aye, yes.